Welcome to the Westminster Select Board. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Welcome, everybody. Let me read you some information. If you're watching through live stream and you want to participate, I'm assuming you've already called 929-205-6099. The meeting ID is 418-775-274. And the password is 071780. And I guess it's not here. Oh, yeah, it's at the top of the screen, too. Once you're connected to the meeting, you will automatically be muted for the start of the meeting. This is our board, too. So if you want to respond to any item, dial *9. And I think I'll see you on the side. And then I'll unmute you and ask you to give your name and a comment. And then after that, you'll be muted to avoid background noises. Now, to vote, for the board to vote, you'll vote one at a time. And I'll say, Toby, you vote. And I think that's it for now. So, okay, let's get started. Any adjustments to the agenda? Having none, communications and public comments?
The minutes first, please.
Oh, sorry. Whoops. Okay, accepted the minutes of March 25th, 2020.
I move we accept the minutes as printed.
Second.
Moved by Toby and seconded by Sheldon. BB. That we accept the minutes of March 25th. Any discussion? All in favor? Toby?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Kevin? Kevin? Kevin?
Aye.
Aye, Kevin says aye, okay, great. And I guess I vote aye. Okay, minutes have been approved. Communications and public comments. Okay, so how do, here's a question, Alex. So someone says *9, how do I see that? It's not here, okay.
There's going to be a hand.
Oh, somewhere on the side, I guess, okay. Well, I don't see any blue hands, so I think they're, oh, yeah, I see, okay. No public comments for now, good. Unfinished business. Henwood Hill Discussion tabled from our March 11th meeting. So I guess I'd just like an update on where we are on that. And I don't know how much we can discuss tonight, but we're going to have to discuss it sometime in these irregular meetings.
In your packet, you have the document from the bank that was submitted to you a while ago. It hasn't changed, I haven't changed it. It's just, it was tabled for March 11th and I put it back on there.
Okay.
And this document represents what? This is Kevin Hughes.
This is the, the rates quoted at a beginning balance of $170,000 with the payments of the $37,500 that was granted on the article at town meeting.
Okay. Again, just so I'm clear, why am I reading this correctly saying total interest $17,462?
That's correct.
Okay, so didn't we have a discussion over a loan and not taking a loan?
That's, that's why it's still on there, Kevin, because nothing was decided.
Yeah, we went around and around on this and there was no decision about how we would, when we would spend the money, whether we would fix the road in one year or over several years. Not quite sure how we're going to come to a decision on this, but we're going to have to do some work this summer.
Right, but this is, again, I just, this is the first I've ever seen this loan sheet.
Yes, it is the first time.
I didn't see it.
Can you see it now?
Oh, there it is, okay. I don't, I don't have that sheet.
I've never seen that sheet before either.
No, it's new to the package this week, I know, yeah.
$17,000, since it's up there, $17,462 in interest is on the potential of taking a $170,000 loan? That would make sense. I'm trying to be clear about it. Because I'm going to be opposed, please put me on the record, even if it's four to one, I'm going to be opposed to the loan. That's a 10% rate, 10% rate, 10% on $170,000. I don't, amortized over five years at 2%, still 10%. You won't be by yourself. Okay, just so Russ, as long as he's taking a note, considering what we went on with the, with the, you know, with the records and everything on the last thing we had to do, I'm just writing in, I'm opposed to the loan, even though we're not, I haven't made a decision, I'm going to be opposed to the loan. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, yep. So, so what are our options? I guess that's the question for fixing the road which needs to be wrote.
We have $37,492 to start this year. But I'm opposed to that.
And who is this?
This is Craig.
Craig, yeah, okay.
I'm with him, I don't, I'm not objecting to 170, I just thought we were going to spend $37,000 here, keep working on it.
Do as much work as we can with $37,000 this year, is that the idea?
That was what my thinking was, but I could be wrong.
Where, roughly where would that bring us? Where would that bring the road at that point? Do we have any idea?
No.
But we should be able to get started on it and getting the bids going, not the bids, but whatever we got to be doing, so.
And meanwhile, what would we do? Would we, would we just keep it as a one-lane road? Would we make it a one-way road for the duration?
I think those are all decisions we're going to have to make as we go along.
That's correct.
Can't we talk to other banks about the loan if?
A better rate, you mean?
Yeah, better rate.
I, my thing is, we never discussed with the voters at town meeting that we were actually borrowing the money that way. What got me, I was thrown off.
Exactly. Exactly, correct.
And I would have to agree, that was never the plan.
Yeah.
And man, I just have one other, one other question, please. When the, the bridge, guys, remember the bridge? We also have the bridge coming up, the bigger portion.
Yep.
Which is, and I thought we do have to take up some debt on that. Would that be overlapping over that five-year period if we were to take on this debt?
We don't have debt with the bridge. We, we can pay for that out of that fund.
The bridge fund, you mean? $83,000, is that our portion or is that the engineering portion? Am I remembering, for the bridge, the 121 bridge?
I think our portion, and this is by recall now, I don't have it in front of me, is $53,000. And we have that.
Okay.
Again, I, I don't have that in front of me.
Okay, thank you, Russell.
And what is the potential for surplus from this year? Russ?
At this point, it's very hard to tell with what we're going through right now with taxation and et cetera. So I don't have a best guess at this point. I feel there, we're going to be okay. But I couldn't even venture a guess at what the end of the year will bring at this point.
The bridge, if you go to the Article 3 that's in your packet, all your figures on the bridge are there. And it is $53,100.
Oops, $56.
Thank you.
So we're not going to, we're not going to have to borrow money for that certainly, because we have.
We have $137,000 in it.
In the bridge fund, right. Well?
Could I ask how, I, I don't have the bank. She, who, did we look for, or did we put it out to ask other banks for another amount of interest?
I think the issue is that people feel that we did not ask the voters to borrow that money.
That's true.
Right, so that's sort of a moot point. So I think the big questions are, we're, we're going to have to do something about this road. So do we want to do little by little with whatever money we can scare together? Or are we going to try to scare together more money and fix it?
Well, I don't, I've been out on that road and I can't, I cannot imagine doing it bit by bit. It's a dangerous road now and it's going to be more dangerous. So I don't see any way that that is a, is a solution unless we close it off altogether.
And did we have an amount that we think the total amount we do somewhere that we think it's going to cost, right, right, Russ?
Yes, well, we haven't put it out to a formal bid yet. It's under 100, it's under $300,000 total with 170 being the.
Right, 170.
I still think it's been really a one-lane road anyways, but I just think we got a little time yet to start. We got money to start with anyways, and that's the whole.
You can't start it and leave it.
Well, we could.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not sure if I'd agree with that.
Brad Sheldon, what were you going to say?
My thought has been that, I mean, we could, because it's, we're talking about using the town crew to do the cutting of the trees and moving the bank back and so forth, which we can close the road for a day or two days or three days and then go in and cut trees and take the excavator and work the bank back. And we can do that portion easy enough, you know, this year, which will widen, it will make it so we can, you can see around the corner a little bit better, I believe. And I mean, even if we only did that this year, it would be, you know, a, a good start.
Yeah, anything that improved visibility on that corner is improving things 100%.
I had talked to Russ earlier, I, you know, we could, you know, when we start excavating fill out of there, I mean, we could take the fill down to the town shed or we can probably find a place closer than that where we could take the fill and dump it and then bring it back in, you know, when we start working the road. I mean, there's enough areas close by that I think we could actually, you know, haul the fill, dump it and, and then bring it back in and not haul it all the way to the town shed. But that would be my thought and, and we could, I mean, that would open it up and get that part of it done. And the rest of it is going to have to go out to bid, I assume, but.
And then we could ask for the money in next year's budget, is that what you're saying?
If we have to, but I can say the, the whole object was to do as much as we could.
Right.
With our own crew, well, once you go to bid, you kind of eliminate your crew.
What kind of, if we, if our crew took down the trees, moved some of the fill so that the road had better visibility, what kind of shape would the road be left in?
It won't be any worse than it is now.
It's not going to change the original road at all.
Right, it would just, I mean, just going in and moving the bank back would not ruin the road bed or, or I mean, I don't know, I don't think about it. I'm just, I just wanted, if we did that, it'll be left for another year. So what would people be driving on? They could see around the corner, but what would they be driving on?
My, my suggestion, Sue, is that we have a meeting in, as we can out, out on that site with Chuck, with Russ, and go over what can the town actually do for us for one year. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Still would have $37,000 on top of that to spend if we got to go buy something or just put the COVID in or something like that. I think we can have a long discussion till right there, because you need Chuck's input, too. You need, you know, you need the highway crew guys' input of, yeah, they, this or can't do that.
Sounds like a great idea. When shall we try and set that up in the next?
Whenever, whenever we can be together again.
Right, outside.
Yeah.
So.
We could actually meet outside as long as we stand far enough apart, yeah.
Exactly, you could do that at any point.
Yeah.
Maybe we could put it off for a couple of weeks and maybe things would be a little better, but maybe the last week of the month or something like that, does that seem reasonable?
That would seem reasonable, yeah.
You're doing it on a knot, a select board meeting night? Is that what you're just saying?
Have to warn the meeting, so.
That's all right, I can do that, but I'm just asking.
I guess the next meeting, when is that, the 20, today's what, the 22nd? I guess we could.
22nd, and then you've got May 13th and May 27th.
How about May 13th? I don't know why, I mean, I'm assuming that Chuckie's going to be busy with spring cleaning and all that with the crew working part-time and all that. So if we did it May 13th, I think that'd be fine.
I like that.
Yeah.
We could, so, Russ, thank you. All right.
So would we meet at like 5:30 onsite?
Yeah, sure.
Sure, that'd work.
Yeah. Any more discussion on this topic, Henwood Hill? Having none, let's go, I don't know if you can get the agenda up, Craig, but I'll read it. Special Town Meeting, the discussion, including information needed for the articles. I'm assuming, and Fletcher, I'm hoping you can weigh in on this. How we're going to, how we're going to hold votes at this meeting? It seems to be, do we have any more information?
We don't at this point. Larry Slayson is still working with the state. They understand the circumstances and they're working on, on a solution that everybody can live with.
Well, we have a solution before May 2nd?
Absolutely, you're going to have one in, in the next week so that we can plan or cancel.
Cancel the meeting or postpone the meeting? What is the, you mean cancel the meeting, is that what you're saying?
It's probably postponed, I, I mean, that I don't know yet. I'm assuming postponed.
Right. My question is, if for some reason we didn't have a budget by June 30th, what, what happens then?
We use last year's budget until such time as we can get a special town meeting to vote on an FY21 budget.
Okay, thank you. Okay, discussion of the articles?
So Russ, let me just follow through on that. In order to come back, we have to set a tax rate. So we would set the tax rate first with the school and everything in it with our last year's budget. Then we would have to go back and do another tax correction after we had a town meeting? Is that right?
We would, Craig, and it, it is just like last year. Later in the, the meeting, we'll talk about the presidential order. July 15th income tax extensions, that is going to do exactly what we had last year. We're going to have to set our rate, that's, that's the best guess at that point. And after the homestead rates come back in and, and everybody gets squared away, then our second tax bill will reflect the, the adjustment. So if our budget gets, gets passed after that point, the first bill probably wouldn't, wouldn't show it, but the second bill possibly would. So we have to do it anyway, which is unfortunate, but that's, that's what's going to happen with the presidential order that, that's, that has gone down right now.
Any other questions? Fletcher, do you want to weigh in on this?
Well, I, I mostly came because I was curious to see what you guys were going to work out, because I have no idea how you handle voting at a mass meeting. It's one thing to say everybody can see what's going on at the meeting, but to actively participate, I know the technology exists, but we don't have it. I mean, my wife was at a, at a mass meeting a few years ago when she was in Sarajevo and Bill Clinton was hosting it, he was on a big screen and he could literally see and call on everybody in the room. But that was because Google itself was running the meeting.
Suppose we could give them a call, I don't know, yeah.
Technology exists, but we don't have it.
Right.
So I have no clue what I'm supposed to do when it gets to a vote.
Right. Yeah, and how to vote and how to make sure the voters are residents? How do you do that?
I mean, they got a, I mean, that, it would take forever. Every person would have to vote one by one and identify themselves by name so Ally couldn't look at the checklist.
So we can't have a voice where everybody yells in at once, yea or nay?
I'm not exactly sure how, how that would come across the surface. Probably just fuse a circuit.
Well, hopefully we'll get more guidance from the state at the next meeting, by the next meeting, with any luck?
Yes.
Okay.
I sure hope so.
I sure hope so, too.
Is it, is it a dumb idea? Would it actually be possible to hold a meeting where you separate everybody by feet and it's outdoors?
Well, you know, we could do it on a field, maybe.
That would be fun. Everybody in favor, go to the right, and everybody against, go to the left. You could do the voting that way, discussion would be more difficult, but I guess it's an idea. Hey, all right, well, do we want to talk about the, did everybody, I, I guess not everybody got their packet yet, is that correct?
I got mine, but I just didn't get that bank thing.
No, did you get the articles and everybody sees what your article is going to be?
Yeah.
Sheldon and Kevin and et cetera, et cetera.
I got my article and I see everything, I read through it and they all seemed fine to me, but.
Yeah, okay. Anybody have any questions? Okay, anything else you want to say about that? Russell?
Um, there's a couple that are blank on facts. I just need to know what those individuals want. Toby should be asking me about hers. Craig should ask me about his. Everybody else has facts. So at some point in the next week or so, a phone call to me would be helpful and I can go through it with you and kind of help out with the, the facts of, of the article.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you. Any other questions about that? Under Special Town Meeting, we have the reports on the senior housing, the broadband and the Northwest Community House.
I put, I put that there because we didn't do it at the regular meeting and we had kind of planned on it. I'm not pressing it, I'm just throwing it back out there so that you don't forget about it if you wanted to do it.
It's one of those things, if it's a regular meeting, we should, but if it's one of these type of meetings, I don't think we should.
Yeah. Not much has gone on, I'm assuming. Does any, is anything of import come up on these issues?
Not really, because we can't even meet to have a meeting.
Exactly, so unless somebody has a, has a, wants to, wants to hear something, we'll table that till the future.
That's what I think.
Yeah, okay.
Very good, yep.
That's good. New business. Dagel Road Drainage Issue.
That's another site visit that I would like you folks to consider. I don't want to set a precedence, but we have a drainage issue on that road and I'd like your feedback on it.
Okay.
Can we do it at that same evening? Leave Henwood and, and go to Dagel?
Drive around town? Is an hour enough time? Do we need more time?
Well, what I'm saying is that would be your meeting.
Oh, I see. All right, well, let's plan to do that unless other issues come up that we definitely have to meet about. And then we could, you know, how, how urgent is the Dagel Road issue?
It's spring.
Well, here we are, all right. Okay, let's try and do them at the meeting then, see how that works.
And if we did have some urgent business, I mean, it will be a warned meeting. We could do, do it at one of the sites, spread out. If the public wants to join us, they can.
Okay.
And what date is that meeting? Is that the one in May?
May 13th, 5:30 at Henwood and we'll do Dagel there directly after.
Okay. Anything else on that? Third quarter financials, I think you'll have those in your packet. So usually we just get them at this meeting and we can discuss them at the next meeting unless someone has something they want to say. Okay?
Good with that.
Okay, good, thank you. Presidential order, I think you're up on this, Russ?
Wait a minute.
You're right, Sheldon, thank you. Delinquent taxes, this is yours too, Russ.
Okay, um, in your packet, you have the two-year delinquents, just for an FYI. But the, the, the big thing is, is I have kind of gone through a sequence every year and so I'm kind of bending it and I would like your, your blessing on it. So the process is, the first letter went out and if you want to follow this, select board, it's the manager's report, which there won't be a manager's report, but the, the details are there if you want to read, read along with it.
There's nothing I bring up?
No, please don't.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So the first letter went out March 10th and it stated as a friendly reminder that you are two years in arrears for your property taxes. The second letter was sent out and it typically states that you have until April 6th to call or make arrangements to pay a contractor full payment with a delinquent tax collector or your, your property is going to legal counsel to start the process of, of tax sale. And that's typically April 7th. What I did this year is I sent out the second letter. It was in pink and stated that this, we're, we're going to give them another month of time to, to either contact me or make full, full payment. And that the list would be sent to legal counsel in, in another month. So that would be like May 7th. And the, the tax sale typically would happen in mid-June and I don't see the urgency of having one this year. It can be definitely July, August, even September of the following year. I just think that in this times of people being unemployed, that we're pressing them hard and I think we should give them a little more time to contact me and, and go through a contract of some sort. This would also give me time to reach out to these individuals so that I can, I can, you know, work with them and, and create a better environment of getting these collected. So I've, I've suspended this process and now I'd like your guidance on what is fair to our, to our delinquent taxpayers.
I don't think it's unreasonable, I don't think we're unreasonable and, and we shouldn't veer off too far in the sense that, you know, we all know that there's an issue going on with the virus, but that doesn't. but that doesn't stop you from calling on the phone and making arrangements or discussing that, you know, you're unemployed, you don't have a job, you don't, I mean, that's, that's just common courtesy and talking to the town manager or the tax, the delinquent tax collector to make arrangements for what's gonna happen or what you could or could not do. So, I wasn't very too, too far off of that. The tax sale, I don't mind if you, you know, suspend that, if you decided to do that or if the board decided that was all right. But you're making arrangements for, for paying your, your bills and some of these are pretty regular. I don't know that I'd go too far off the beaten path, in my opinion. What's everybody else think?
Well, I think it's, I think that people should be in touch with Russ and talk with them about their own particular situations. And if they are unemployed, I mean, the banks are now, you know, giving people extra months and putting the mortgages at the end of their, their 30 years or whatever it is they have a mortgage. That's, that's what, how they're handling this because it is such a horrible thing for some people. Not everybody, but I think people should be in touch at least to talk about what it is. I don't think that we, it should be punitive if, if they're in touch and their situation is such that they, they really can't pay it.
Hey, Russ, how does it work with their escrow into the bank? Does the bank notify us that all of a sudden they're not gonna be able to send the money? Or does the people send, notify us?
The escrow happened before the virus, so we didn't see that at all. We possibly could see that on the next tax bills. But right now, we're, the escrow is not, hasn't been hindered, not a bit.
But what I'm saying, when you're coming up, will, will the bank call and say, here, we got 10 people you're not gonna get the money from?
Or? I'm sure we'll be in touch with some.
Okay. Until we actually have an end to this, I don't know if we, any of us could come up with that decision tonight.
No, I, I'm, I'm only asking that, that you're not totally against what I've done so far and that, like, case by case, I'm gonna take it as we always have and work out some sort of an arrangement. But I just wanted to make sure that you were in the know and you had a chance to weigh in on it if you needed to.
Let me break in here. One of our participants has stated that the documents we asked not to show, which is the list of delinquent taxpayers, that is public information. Anyone can get it from the town hall. But as, as I understood, Russ, you said some years ago, we voted not to make that information public in the public meeting.
In the, in the town report.
In the town report.
We didn't, yeah, we, we don't publish it any longer. But if somebody really wanted to see the list, they could definitely come in and it's a public document. But that's why I just asked him not to bring it up.
Also, if, and I know we, we were trying to do that, this, that Russ would show the packet on the screen and it kinda worked that first practice session, but then it didn't work just before this meeting. So, I think Alex is kind of working on some kind of glitch in the system. So, Russ will be able to put up all the packet information. But maybe before the next meeting, we could also have the packet information available for the, all the board members that we can stop and get it or somehow pick it up before the meeting so we'll have it in hand.
That makes sense.
Or even by, if we have it by email, then we could, some of us, like Craig was showing it on the screen, but he didn't have the, the last documents in the packet. So, if we could get a complete packet close to the meeting, then maybe that will work. Yes, correct, good?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Do you have the proper guidance now, Russell?
I do, thank you.
Okay, good, all right, so done with delinquent taxes for now, onto the presidential order?
And as I stated prior, it, it's about the, your extension, the, the income tax extensions are July 15th. So, if you haven't, if you don't submit your income tax, then your homestead rate will not be posted in a timely manner for your August bill. So, hence, we're going to have to adjust the, the tax bills on, on some, not all, but some, as we did last time. And of course, I'll keep you in, in the loop of how, how it looks, how we're, we're, how we should adjust the rate to, to, to work with this and we'll go from there.
Okay, any other comments on that? Anybody in the public wanna say anything? So far, so good, liquor licenses.
They're not in the package? I didn't find those, right?
No, I didn't, I didn't scan them and send them, they're, they're 15 pages. The liquor licenses can be, can be voted on all at once. I just need to have the person that makes the motion declare that it's for Allen Brothers, Carlo Farm and Westminster Station Market for the liquor license for the next upcoming year. And then I need you folks to come in and sign, sign the liquor licenses. I'm supposed to have at least three, if not five.
Let's load up, let's load on this first. So, Craig has made, Craig, no, you didn't, no, Sheldon moved to, to approve the liquor licenses. Toby, you should second it.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Let's vote on it, but I am recusing myself or abstaining.
So, nice, so.
Right.
Got a majority, so I don't care.
Right, so Toby, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Sheldon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kevin, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, then approved, liquor licenses have been approved. So, could the three people who voted on it at some point in the next week or two?
Actually, all five of you, if you came in, Craig can sign one of them. You can sign two of them and the other three can sign the others. And I need to have Kevin come in and sign the minutes anyway. So, Kevin, if you could do that for me, that would be great.
I think I'm gonna be stopping in at the office tomorrow.
Okay. So, have some heavy signing being done.
Will you have them done by then, Russell?
They're done, yes.
Cuz I'll be down, I'll probably be down there too, so sometime.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you very much. Managers' report, you said that.
I don't have one, it was just the delinquent tax.
Yeah.
Question.
Thank you, boards and commission?
I have nothing to report other than they've been canceled. For the meantime, until we can get this, this option up and running for them also.
Okay, thank you. Other business? Looking to see any little blue hands, I don't see any, so. Okay, right, okay. So, date of the next meeting is April 22nd at 6:30 PM. We're gonna be trying this again, doing this again. Thank you for your patience, thank you for your help.
Thank you.
From my end, I think it's not okay.
Bad, I'm sorry.
We miss seeing your face, we miss seeing your face, Sheldon.
I'm sure.
Does any, anybody have any more comments?
I can move adjourn.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourned the meeting.
Seconded?
I did.
Thank you.
Okay, it moved and seconded, we adjourned the meeting, the meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone.